C and P through extend three phase. Think about it two tenths of a mile further up Manhattan Road. A single phase ends a few hundred feet south. We're putting about four or five new CMP poles, power poles going into the site and then everything beyond that will be underground. It's a what's called a fixed tilt array. So the arrays will be. Mounted on sort of steel. Ground screws in the ground and then steel racking. Won't have any sort of moving parts. The rays will be in arrays east, west facing about thirty degrees south. And the whole array itself will be encapsulated within a seven foot tall electrical fence that meets electrical code. And we use that will typically be a sort of wildlife mesh fence for your light duty. That's, that's pretty much it. It will all grow back up into be revegetated, the entire area after it's sort of stripped and grubbed and. Installation will just turn back into grass underneath the panels. I think I'll, I'll stop there.
I've got a bunch of questions about. Site plans. Should we go through that first and then run through our findings of fact and, and checklist and everything?
I would suggest quickly just doing the findings of facts, at least just the. Initial items because your site plan questions will probably be under Article three anyways. At least that's. What's the question actually?
Oh, I don't know. I've got those all over the charts.
Can I ask one general question? Where in our ordinance? Because it disappeared on me. Last twenty-four hours. Where is the section that tells us about setbacks from? Wetlands, rivers. Streams, et cetera, et cetera. Is it in section? Article eight or is there, is there a specific list or is there?
It depends on the wetland. If it's one that's in our shoreline zone, that is under the shoreline zoning articles. If it's not in the shoreline zone, but that's usually something we talked to D E P about and D E P usually has about seventy-five foot setback.
So far as it wetland or intermittent stream, blah, 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 generally it's seventy-five feet. From disturbance or from construction or?
Disturbance, but we would, we would ask the D E P to weigh in on that. They usually would, if he wants to talk about this. And if I recall, this is something that will indeed be permitted as well.
So if it's not specifically in shore land. We go to D E P every time because we're, we're here any kind of water body for any, any kind of project?
I would, yeah, usually talk to D E P about that just in case they have some. But I would bring it to D E P's attention. If D E P says they need a permit, then it would be their state permit they have.
So the map that we have for the town that has water bodies encircled. Surely, yeah, that's just, okay.
Brian though?
Yeah. That's the. But then. There's different colors, blah, 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 but it doesn't, where does it tell us what? The possible implications of those different colors might be. You're saying it's a minimum seventy-five feet no matter what?
Well, we're talking about the shoreline zone?
Well, this is the only thing I had to look at for any kind of water body or.
Right, those are all shoreline zone.
Yeah. But it doesn't matter which one it is.
Shoreland zone, the shoreline zone Article eleven goes over the different setbacks for those items. The colored ones.
Article eleven? Yeah, okay, but there's no. So it doesn't have a chart for say it's, it's in a different paragraph?
Correct. And I'm sorry, I mean, I quickly just admit some people who are in the waiting room because they may be here for the planning board and maybe they're here for. The budget committee meeting. I have someone named Burke and Jen on. Are you two here for the budget committee or the planning board meetings? I hear nothing. They'll just be here until I hear. Alright, so. Yeah, that's, that's it for the wetland. Unless it's in the shoreline zone and close to a wetland. It's something that's just something I refer to D E P.
So last month we were here. Talking about setbacks from a wetland. And we seem to know what that setback distance was.
Seventy-five feet.
Sure, yeah. That's not in our land use ordinance anywhere. This is, that's state statute.
That's usually state.
Maybe we should include it somewhere.
Well. We, we can discuss that item a bit more. We can start going through the checklist and the wetland discussion can grow up because. That might be. Something that's going to be brought up.
And I have a question next before we start.
Yep.
And again, I think this is about the fifth. Solar project that I've. Studied that's come to the planning board. And I'm, I have, I'm on a bit of a dilemma here and I understand my purview on this planning award is not to ask. At least I was shouted down the last time I did. About supplies, where you get your solar panels. I understand that. But I also have a moral and ethical imperative. To know after I've researched this that eighty percent of all solar panels come from China. And they employ underage workers, slave labor, if you want to call it that. Now, again, you don't have to answer me, but I need to bring that up because. Everything that I've done in my research suggests. That eighty percent of all these panels and the ancillary parts, some eighty-five, ninety percent are made in China. So I just need to get that on the record because as much as I am for solar. Energy and I am, I cannot have the party to. A project where I know where those panels are coming from. I also know the cost is obviously. You want to get the best price. Americans can't compete with the Chinese. So again, you don't have to answer that. That's not in the purview. Of me as a planning board member, but it is a purview of me as a citizen. Who has a moral and ethical imperative to bring up what I feel is a horrible wrong. So I want to leave it at that. You don't have to answer anything. But I just again, wanted to get that off. And again, this is about the fifth. Time we've gone over a so. So again, and it's always bothered me and. I guess, you know, I'm going to leave it there.
So I guess that actually transitions to the first question I was going to ask. In my submission checklist. Does anyone believe there are conflicts of interest with this application?
No, I have a revision of energy community solar farm at my house, but I don't see it as being a conflict.
I don't think it would be a conflict, but I, I don't think. I, I, I'm, I'm going to try to keep an open mind. I don't think it's a conflict, but I have very strong feelings on it. So I don't know. How I could frankly hit the lights.
Well, I appreciate that Johnny put like all of our cars outside in the parking lot. Are largely parts from away.
Oh, I understand that Barbara, but this is a, this is different. This is child labor. It's you guys who are being forced to make these panels. At a price that no American firm can compete with. That's different than a car. I think when you have slave labor. And you have children doing that. So I think that's very different than what you're pointing out.
So. Just going over the how conflicts of interest work. It's just more of. Like Barbara just did a moment ago. She said that she is part of the community solar farm that revision and she did do, but she doesn't believe she has a conflict. It's the same question. I'm sort of reaching out to all of you on. Based on your hands, do you believe you can barely assess this application without bias? That's sort of the question when it comes to conflict interest.
That's a tough question for me. Because I would be absolutely head over heels if I could say, yeah, we're going to buy these in America. And this is what we're going to do and we're going to get all our product. Yes, I would say yes. But unless I knew that and I know I can't, so I'm kind of in a bind here. I'm in a moral and physical philosophical bindment about how I feel about the project.
I'm sure the galvanized pipes are from Mexico. Right? The pipe work. It's all Mexican.
The steel? Yeah, I mean, I, I actually don't know the exact, you know, source of these. Materials. I think actually a lot of the steel is American. And I think you can bring up a good point that there are many supply chains that could be cleaned up, but it's valid concerns I mean to have, but I think it's. They're relatively universal. So I know in the most part, the panels we're buying are from. South Korea because of the tariffs on Chinese, drag Chinese panels, so.
If you're something like that, I could either, I mean, again, the more information I could get to make a. A legitimate decision would help me, would help my conscience.
Yeah, so the primary panel manufacturer where we purchased from is Q cells that manufacture in South Korea for the most part. Engineered in Germany.
Well, I guess it's the, that being stated, I guess I could. Say, okay, I'm. I feel a lot better.
Eric, where are you going?
No, I, you know, I, I sympathize with your position. I mean, I feel the same way, although I do feel that, that, you know. This came up in a funny way in the last meeting about aesthetics, right? Because, you know, although aesthetics are in part of our, part of our, of what we review in a way, but. Whereas what you're talking about actually is not. However, having said that, I do sympathize with your position. I think that in fact, you know, if one. If, if one feels that way, one can reduce themselves and say, look, I can't, I can't, I can't vote here because suddenly because this is too. This is just too, it impacts me too much. I'm not voting based on what are the criteria. I'm voting on, I'd be voting on what I feel is right.
And that's an excellent point and I would like, I could hold that in abeyance. I could accuse myself if I felt that it was something. But no, that's an excellent point. And again, I'll hold that in my hip pocket, so.
I, I, I get it. I agree, actually.
Okay.
Okay. No conflict of interest?
I'm, I'm going to say no. I have not.
Does the applicant have standing? I believe. The applicant has provided a. Lease. Yeah, we have an option, optional lease of property. So it will transition to a long-term lease, but that's the title right.
I have a question about that. So how long is the lease for?
It'll be twenty-five years, possibility to extend it for another ten.
And. And the lease property, I noted that it says here that the lease property is fifteen acres. But it's, but, but the site actually is only five. So could you just talk about the discrepancy between five to fifteen?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where it points to fifteen, but I would, I think, you know, the, the exact meets and bounds will be actually be just routed by a surveyor. Based on the, you know, ultimate design, but I believe. It's equal to more like six acres. There may be what you might be looking at. I'm realizing exactly that title rate or interest there was. Originally, we were looking at up to fifteen acres of property.
Okay.
So the project might have been at one time, a couple multiples larger, the building size that we relanded at was.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear about that. We know, we're looking at it, it's a project, it wasn't necessarily, it says here, site approximately fifteen acres of property. Exhibit D.
Yeah, so that would be sort of the exploration area, if you will, that we were looking at.
But once, now that you've honed in on the site, you have to get, take it's five acres. And that's what the lease is going to be for.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And it's not going to encompass necessarily all of the property that's shown. Here.
Yeah, I think the overall, the pair property only has forty acres, give or take. So yeah, it's much, much smaller than that.
Here it shows that you looked around, around like Jim and Nancy's house. And then come back to the road again on the other side. So this exhibit here, you show your entryway.
Yep.
And you showed this property, but then it loops right around, around. Well. Actually not their property is next door. Loopes around this property here and then. And then goes back to the road again. You wouldn't be. Have a lease on that part of the property, would you?
No, correct, correct.
It's just on the, on the part that it's actually.
Yeah, I would say look to the actual site plans rather.
I did want to know the one thing while I was reading through that is that there's a. Option to buy or to end to you or use. Has that been satisfied? In the, in the deed?
What was that?
There's an option.
Yeah.
To buy that land and or to use that land by a third party. I just wondered that that's been satisfied to your knowledge.
I mean, there's, so we, we ourselves have an option to meet.
This is the original deed.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm not, I'm not aware of that. We, you know, we've done our title due diligence.
It says. The deed of this said that Arthur Nicholson the third, Arthur J Nicholson shall have the right during the term of their natural life to come onto land and use the same. For farming and general use of said land. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you we're, you know, we, we have our title attorney that have run, run the screens of the property. So we're.
So that must have expired somewhere.
Yeah.
Or they've actually.
That's my understanding.
Reach on go of that plane.
Yeah. Oh, there. So. Is there any objection to the applicant having standing? No, no. We'll go over the application being components. And my findings of fact. Now, Board of Refining Board has considered the following application for. Four hundred and sixty-five slash four hundred and eighty-nine Manhattan Road. And I have it that way just because I know what you're saying. It's roughly forty-nine, but it's not split yet. So I'm just putting in what it. Also known as. R fourteen lot four four, including supportive data, staff, two comments, public hearing testimony and related materials contained record. Planning Board makes the following findings of fact. Project description, the applicant has proposed constructing a solar farm that will occupy. Four point two eight acres of area when the project is completed. This would be considered a renewable energy structure commercial. As step on in the Volbear Land Use Ordinance on page fifteen dash twenty-four, the planning board's authorized to review renewable energy structure. Commercial under section six point seven point five of the land use ordinance. African owner, the applicant is revision energy incorporated as represented by. I have Alex Roberts here, but I'll have to direct it to Nate Niles, right?
Yep.
The owners of the property are Nancy and James Carvones, who I believe are attending remotely on Zoom tonight. Project location, the property under consideration is map R fourteen lot forty-four. The lot has a total acreage of thirty-seven point eight nine acres according to the Walderboro's tax assessors agent. The law is owned in a rural district which allows these structures with planning board approval. Currently, the land is used for residential. Both land use is for renewable energy structure commercial use. The only permits that are on file that I can find were intended to harvest through the Maine Department of Conservation, which concluded in two thousand thirteen. Planner deemed the application ready for planning board review with the page description. Site plan review cover form, twelve pages covering all standards, stormwater documents prepared by D H B in New Hampshire. Statement for Vanguard Savings to verify financial capacity, phosphorus calculations, four-page commissioning plan. An agreement with the owner of the property outlined in the closed use. And a full-size plan for site plan and soil erosion. Public hearing, the Lincoln County News has run their March seventh and March fourteenth edition of the newspaper, legal advertisement for the public hearing of this application. On March fifth, two thousand and four, a talent has mailed notices to the owners of properties that directly above the doors of the property under review. And I don't have it in here, but I conducted my site visit. On the March twelfth, this past Tuesday. Which I forwarded some photos to the planning board members this. This, this morning. If no one has it, I do have some. Unfortunately, they won't come out in color, so it will be black and white, but I'll pass it down just a bit. The applicant had a public, applicant had a public hearing during March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, planning board meeting, which is this month. That is the draft findings of fact. So next would be reviewing the application and. In section, since Article three goes over the site plan items, Brendan, was there some items you wanted to go over for that?
Yeah. Uh, just off the top of my head. On your site plan. There's a note, calling outs. Chain link fence. You have a detailed chain link fence. We also have a detail for. The, the wildlife fence for lack of a proper term. And it's unclear if it's a pine type of prime. Doesn't differentiate between the two types of fence. I'm wondering if you could explain. What fence goes where?
I can tell you any reference to a chain link fence must have just been a drafting error. So our, you know, the whole perimeter fence will be a, will be. You know, steel vertical posts with a wildlife mesh. So you're not going to have a chain link fence gate across the road. The gate might be, you know, just the, you know, sixteen foot gate that mesh might be. Chain link, but I think we can just as easily cover it in wildlife and that's our preference.
I don't even see a wildlife fence.
It's, I guess, that most we'd have, you know, the gate which we. You know, if that's supposed to be pre-assembled product, it will chain link. That would be the extent of the chain link out there.
Okay, um.
On that note, can I just interject?
Sure.
Super helpful. These guys good money, right? If they have a graph about a page, they actually. Put what is a graphic fix being used on a page? These lines with a cross on it could be a twelve inch to be on. Run off an extra and it could be a silk fence. It's like, we don't know what we're referring to. So silk fence typical, but then, you know, then where's the other? Type of. Because we have to go all the way to the other package to put it out, but they're going to kind of frustrate them.
Yeah, yeah, it's, most of it's in notes, but. It's, it's definitely confusing. Just going sheet by sheet here. The, the screening plantings aren't yet defined. I haven't seen the photos that Max sent this morning yet. It seems like there's a, you know, a good piece of woods through there. Is it not really well screened? By this woods right now, like a little bunch of tall hardwoods that you can see right through or something?
Yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, it's a pretty thick under story, but it is predominantly hardwood. I think, yeah, the idea was just to sort of, you know.
Again, sorry that.
You know, you know, my colleague Alex, who was out there met on site, which has met with some of the V I butters. And they had, they just had, you know, the house directly across the street had some digital concerns that we thought, you know. In addition to leaving that, the existing vegetation, we would put in some of those things there. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was something I noted that early, I think I didn't put in. But one of the recommendations I was going to make for. Section seven point one was to have a condition for Google that evergreen would be planted along with the outside buffer based on.
Yeah.
What the neighbors said.
It's a, it's an interesting. It's an interesting application for the vegetative buffer because. Usually when we ask for that, it's, you know, for buildings, it's going to be there. You know, theoretically in perpetuity, you know, and in your case, you're going to be gone in twenty-five or thirty-five years. So. Those trees aren't going to like become a chore in the, in the time span of your project.
But it's not a building either. It's much lower.
Yeah, exactly. So I wonder if, you know, more smaller plants makes more sense versus. Doing, you know, larger trees.
Well, they're going to be small for.
Yeah, you know, I, I would ask the site today, I, I was wondering about this because. This looks like, actually, when I look, when I walk down the field, it looks like it's basically old field behind there that had overgrown. Because everything, most of it is what's down there is saplings coming up. But I do think that if you put, and I was wondering about that buffer. From. You were talking about that. And the property. There's one because your field goes all the way across that property because the road is all the way to, to the, I guess, south. So all that would be, all of those pens would be exposed to the, to the road and to, if, if there wasn't a, many of those pens would be exposed to the road if there wasn't a buffer. In place there. And you're planning on putting in conifers?
Well, we're leaving, you know, there will be, with the exception of where the driveway cuts down through. You know, the, it cuts into the existing, you know, tree line. That tree line will remain along the far side of the fields, the far east side of the field. So we're, we're just planting a line of evergreens on the west side of that existing tree line.
Right, on the field side.
Down at the end of the field.
Right, yeah, I mean, that, although that tree line isn't really significant. If you go down there, it's mostly saplings and there's a few trees, but nothing of any, nothing of any. Of any. Import and so. They would be, if there was no buffer there, you would see right through, you would see right through to the panels, especially in the winter. I mean, during the summer, I suppose it would be covered with undergrowth, but, but for the most part, it would be exposed. So to me, it's a good idea. I do think conifers would grow. Ten years, you've got twelve foot tall conifers, you grow six or if you put in six to eight footers now, that's for sure.
I know that the landowners across the house, across the street did want to preserve the view out over the hill, you know, they have, they have a view out. Further, so there was sort of, there was a balance there, but they were not wanting to block it also.
More questions?
Yeah, on. C two oh two. I'm wondering if you can explain a couple of things. You've got an approximate two hundred and fifty foot vernal pool buffer line. Have the vernal pools been identified out there? So you know where they are. I'm just surprised that it's an approximate because usually. You know, survey yourself to approximate.
Yeah, so we, we did, we did do wetland evaluation and did encompass identifying and, you know. Soliciting feedback and getting this designation of, of vernal pools. That vernal pool is way far to the north of the array. So it's, you know, we're outside of, we're more than two hundred and fifty feet away from it. And not impacting the sort of vernal pool depression. So. Where, where is this line? Where is it? Right here, yeah, okay. So I mean, the vernal pool that we're. That that is applicable to is somewhere far north of the. Of the project location.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we closely designed it outside of that as well as outside of the forest and wetland.
Okay, so that was my next question. Your construction goes right up to the line of this delineated wetland and. We're used to seeing a setback from that. And I'm just wondering. Is this line actually the wetland? Is this including a setback from a wetland? Like, I'm sort of, I'm sort of baffled about that.
Yeah, so there, I mean, there are many different tiers of wetlands out there. There, there are wetlands of special significance that are defined by the state which carry the seventy-five foot setback which now we're talking about. There are also just general wetlands that don't carry a setback that, you know, such as the forest wetland that's there. So, I mean. It is, it is always a balance with development. And so, you know, we wanted to build a certain project of a certain size and so. You know, the, the way we achieved that was by moving outside of the. The well and it wouldn't be possible to sort of cite the, you know, we're balancing a lot of different factors, but we felt like we landed in the sort of right location that balances. The impacts as you define it, you know. With this sort of development, so.
So you're creating a road, swale between the road and the wetlands. At the bottom of the swale, the bottom of the hill, it gets caught by a pipe. Then it goes into this detention basin. And all the set work happens right next to the wetlands. And I'm just confused because. Max, help me out here, but on, on our section, when it talks about buffer strips, in order to prevent road surface drainage from directly entering water bodies to return streams or wetlands. Roads should be designed, constructed and maintained to empty into an unscarified buffer strip of at least fifty feet in width. Plus two times the average slope and width, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, it looks like you're fifteen feet. At that connection point, which is kind of a funny design solution. Seems like going from a swale to a pipe to a. You know, you're fifteen feet from the delineated wetlands and you're saying that the state has approved this?
Yeah, but I mean, this requires no permitting from the state. This would be, I mean, it's really more balancing the topography, right? So it's really the hillside that goes. I think about it, it slopes to the east, right? So.
But you could have put the road on the other side of the rays, right? And that, that, that would all this drainage against the wetlands?
It would have required, you know, a longer road. You drop a lot more elevation. It would have required, you know, a longer road, you drop a lot more elevation, um, you know. Design is always a balance of many factors, but I think, you know, the, just the way the water is gonna flow here again, as you outlined. We have this sort of drainage ditch along the road that will capture. You know, any runoff from the road, and then it will be, all that sort of runoff will be treated in that sort of detention basin, so. Um, I think the way that the. The sort of flow has been thought out, um, will, will avoid sort of run, runoff into those adjacent lands.
So. What?
That's a shoreline.
Right, but that's what.
You're not, the property's not, I mean, there's no shoreland level wetland resources on the property.
Okay, so it's just the fact that there's wetlands and vernal pools. It's just, we're just gonna balance what the outcome is of the development, and we don't have any. Regulations about that?
About streams that aren't in the.
Well, wetlands, setting back from wetlands, like you said, the last meeting, we were discussing how far back that burn was from the forested wetland.
Right, and that goes back to what Nate just said a moment ago. If it's a wetland of significance, that DNP, if, if it's, if it's a property that's close to these wetlands. You can simply request that a member from the DNP goes out to confirm it, if they haven't already. If it's so far away that it's beyond that seventy-five feet, you don't have to, you don't have to talk to them at all. But it's, it's, it's because it's the type of wetlands that we're gonna deal with, it's significant wetland, and yes. They will need to get that seventy-five.
So the question has been asked at the U P, is this, on this property, is there a significant wetland?
So it's, I mean, structurally, it's, you hire a, a wetland, a professional wetland scientist that makes a determination.
Mm-hmm.
Um, based on a criteria set more than, you know, state standards and Army Corps standards.
And that has happened.
And that is.
And that is why this plan is the way it is.
Yeah, and that's a mapping layer that's incorporated into the planning of this, this array.
Um, on uh, your erosion control plan, um, it was nice to see a full flooded erosion control plan come before us for once. Uh, if you want an example of one to show people, Max, this is a very good one. Um, I do have a. Few notes, uh. You have, you have a, a equipment pad, is that gonna be a cast and place pad?
Uh, one of them is a gravel pad, one of them is a cast and place, um. Concrete pad, I'll put the asphalt right there, this which here.
Um, so you should have a concrete washout location planned out, um, usually a contractor picks the location, um. And the other thing that's not shown on here is the location for spill response materials. You've got those spill response stuff into plan, um, but it should go on to the drawing so that people know where to go look for it. Thank you. So my questions. This is a reminder of uh. The uh, decommissioning, I want to ask you about, um. Underground conduit's gonna remain in place after you decommission, is the way I was reading your plan? You're not gonna, you're gonna pull the conductors, but not. The conduits, correct?
I don't, well, I mean, so the, the state law is that twenty-four inches down. Um, anything, everything, anything and everything comes out, whether it's. By wire, um, steel, so I don't. So I was.
So can't inject that detail. You were showing like where. Maximum five foot depth. Depth varies. Okay. I don't think it's objectionable, I was curious how that was gonna work. Uh, you get a detail for de-watering. In your drawings, are you anticipating having any de-watering on this project?
Um, I, I candidly am not a civil engineering professional, I don't know the scenarios where that would come up.
What is de-watering?
Uh, it's when you pump water out of an exhibition, so you put work inside of it.
I mean, I think the way this area is going to be drilling, I can't imagine that we're gonna be pumping water out of that gas standing area, so.
Okay. Um. Since we're just asking questions here, on the decommissioning plan. Um. What is going to be uh, the mechanism that you're intending to use to guarantee the components there? Uh, I was expecting, because of my experience in public construction, that this was gonna be a performance. Uh, and in your, your documents, you mentioned that there's a bunch of different mechanisms that you could use, uh, but you don't actually say which one you're going to use. So I wonder if you could talk about that some.
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the, at least in the, in the state law for decommissioning, it does leave the options open. I think that's, you know, fair, because not everyone has access to the different, you know, not everyone can bond, some people might need to use an escrow or. And so on, so on, right. Historically, we've always used a letter of credit from a bank, Bank or Savings Bank. Uh, we do, we, we have a number of these in place for comparable or larger solar farms right now. Um, we, we, we would plan to use the same mechanism, so. Um, might that change at some point in the future, potentially, but that's how we're doing it right now.
Max, if you can point me at what our requirement is for that.
For a performance guarantee?
For, yeah, for the decommissioning.
It's rather broad, because especially for something like this, it's something that the state's gonna throw as a guarantee, um.
And our, our, in our ordinance probably mirrors that very much, exactly, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's pretty much just mirroring what the state says, saying. Um, they have to provide a decommissioning plan that's approved by the DNP, and the DNP's decommissioning plan requires that they can put up about. I think, I believe it's a hundred fifty percent.
Right.
Plus the, um. I think I said five years, or it might be ten years, they have to update it, and if the money they have in there doesn't beat it, then they have to start chipping in more.
Yeah. Any other questions on the projects?
So is there a letter per se from the state about, um, verifying that there's no wetlands or significant wetlands on this site? Same as though, um.
There were, yeah, so we, we don't actively get a, a letter, but it's, you know, again, that's, it's done by a century consultant of ours, that's a professional wetland scientist. Um, so there actually is no sort of coordination with the state, because the state allows, they, they said this. They outline the standards that the sort of wetland scientists are held to.
Okay.
And some of the documents, I don't know if they got into the main item or not, but there were also some letters from the. State Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, as well as a historic preservation commission. Uh, and letters from tribes and the Department of Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry. And there were no findings of any rare or essential habitats in the area that would be developed. Don't know if.
Yes, I'll let.
I have a few other questions, uh, regarding. Uh, one of just liability insurance you're carrying. Is that typical, uh, that you carry only one million dollars of liability insurance, except you carry in all your projects?
Um. We, um, we, I could tell you, we, we could carry a bit higher insurance, um, as we've grown as a company, um, than that, so.
That's very low to me, one million dollars.
Is there a specific reference to that in that?
There is.
Is that in, where is that in?
I believe that's in the, in this, uh, in the lease agreement.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's a preliminary lease agreement, actually.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
But it said one million dollars.
Yeah, so it's, it's a minimum standard, I can tell you, our permits are higher than that.
So what is the typical liability you do carry?
I believe it's two million, um, yeah.
Um, and the other thing is that, um, that's, that, that you can. Um, use the leases collateral. I mean, how, how often do you sell out these projects? I mean, are, is, is. Um, revision gonna hold onto this, or can they sell, are they allowed to sell the project to someone else, a third party? And or the lease for that matter, for as a, as collateralizing the lease?
Yeah, so, I mean, our, our plan for this project is, it's create what's called a mini solar farm. Um, we would revision, own it, construct it, own it all the way through construction, build it. Um, it will be sold in shares to either residents or small, you know, local businesses. Um, they will let be the actual owners of the project, once it's actually turned on and offered. Um, there won't be any, you know, under that model, there's no sort of collateralizing, there's no, you know. Loan that you're taking on that you need to, um, you know, pledge it to a bank or anything like that.
So that's the intention, but that's, at this point, it's intentional, you're not gonna help to that, that's not part of the deal per se. You could keep it, or you could, or you could turn it into, into a, uh, a share ownership. Will it be, will it, will it be told that in fact it's gonna be bad?
Um, you know, it's, um. Our plans occasionally change, I'm not trying to be totally cagey about it, um, but we, you know, we, we either. You know, in some cases, their keys are owned by third parties, and, you know, the, the credits are purchased by. You know, municipalities and schools, in some cases, they, they're actually owned in shares by residents and small businesses.
What is that determination made?
Um, typically, um, it's happening in this century right now, I mean, we're hoping to build, we're breaking out of this this summer. We're super motivated to, to start this project, so, I mean, those discussions are happening right now, and we're. Um, I can tell you, we're, we're currently planning for it to be a resident-owned, you know, business-owned project.
What difference does it make? What do you see as the issues?
Oh, I know, I just, you know, I'm just thinking about our community as a whole, I mean, so, I mean, you know, I, it, are these projects being done? For the community to, you know, as a company that the community has access to or, or can benefit from, as opposed to something that's just purely corporate.
CMP district, it's open to the CMP district, right? So not necessarily just rural, but.
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, in that aspect, it's, all these projects benefit, you know, they're, by virtue of the limitations of the program, they all benefit and. Send us a tower with credits to, you know, local residents, businesses.
Well, well, can you explain to me, because I've never understood this, how, how do the actual people of Walderboro? Get a benefit from this? It's just confusing to me. I mean, my regular CMP bill is confusing enough, but how do, how does the actual resident get? The benefit, and if they do, what in fact is that benefit?
Yeah, so, I mean, there might be some direct benefits in case, you know, in the case that it's a resident-owned, um, array, you know, local. Residents could sign up and purchase shares, and, you know, they, they receive benefits essentially the same as if they had panels on their roof.
So they contact revision.
Exactly, yeah, and so that's, that's one way, I mean, there's another answer there where, you know, the, the equipment itself is exempt from taxes, but there's an reimbursement. Program through the state, so there is some, you know, modest tax. Tax revenue, um, coming in from the state, um, indirectly for these arrays.
So, um, the way it worked for me was, um, they looked at individual, your CMP bill.
Yeah.
And they see what your usage is.
Right.
They make a recommendation about how many panels you would need to cover your worst-case scenario, or whatever you wanted to do. Uh, you know, commit to financially, and then that was the percentage of the total, that you owned, you know, two percent of the total arrays as a. Member of that solar community. And you'd go through revision to set that up, and then see it, and then your bill goes through CMP.
Okay, so you'd see on the bills.
Kind of, um. It's very interesting, because then you so totally watch what's going on with the sunshine all the time outside. Um, but, and then during the summer, you're building up credits, and then winter time, you're drawing down on those credits for CMP, CMP for your monthly bill.
I've often wondered, it must be a matrix that CMP or you have about how many sunny days there are in Walderbords. And what's the average accrual of power would be over a calendar year? Is that something that you have in place and you can actually figure out? Okay, I mean.
Yeah.
It's just, I don't know, it's just interesting to me too, if, if that exists.
Yeah, no, there's an incredible amount of weather data out there, there's, there are what are called like typical model years, weather stations that are located all, all across the US that, you know, are open access that we can. That we pull data from, you know, going back, you know, decades, and it models out what a typical year looks like in any given location.
Right.
Yeah, that's, it's incredible how accurate it is.
I don't have any more questions.
To that point around, around CMP and all of, or the buy-in from people, you may point that to anyone who's. A CMP customer could buy into this solar farm, I mean, I mean, again, I, I don't, this is not really under our. Uh, under our privilege, but, but I, I would think. It's sort of like section eight housing in Walderboro, which is now open to anybody who wants to come into Walderboro, but. But it really, in some ways, from my mind, should be offered to Walderboro people first. You know, the same thing with the solar farms, who, why, you know, if, if the solar farmers in our town, and we have, there's a tax consequence to that. Um, then, um, you know, why shouldn't, uh, the people in Walderboro have, have a first shot at it? Just as they should have the first shot in section eight housing or low-income housing. Rather than bringing, rather than opening up to everyone else outside of the town. The town has to share the burden of that, if you will, uh, and, and so I would think that it should be something that should, you know, benefit the town.
I think it just has to be advertised, actually, it's all to make people know we got it.
I was about to say, uh, not solar projects, usually there have been many residents who follow up after seeing the newspaper, curious about signing on to it. I don't know if you've already had some interest ever since the free application was done, but. Usually, these types of meetings lead to people wanting to be on a solar plant.
I know.
Do you have, Max, I recall the Sylvania plant, who was kicked around to have a solar, and it. Came, as my memory serves me, the people from across the river vetoed that because they didn't like it, they didn't, because they'd be in their line of sight. Has anybody, has the town been notified of this, that there could be a solar farm, and do they have input if they want it there?
I think there are other issues.
Remember, yeah, I was about to say, I, I thought I knew where you were going, the Sylvania thing, but. We've never asked the people across the river to weigh in on it, it was abuse being considered. But one of the reasons that never went forward was because the substation just up the road here. Is essentially a max capacity, there's some right, right to get on it, but this is actually gonna be on the substation, I think, in Warren. So it's actually a different one, or, I don't know, but I know it's gonna be a different one that actually could handle this system.
Okay, well, respectfully, Max, I do recall people coming up to me and saying, I don't want a solar farm there, because I don't wanna see all the panels. So it may not have been an official thing, but it was talked about in discuss.
Well, and I'll add on that we also had that, uh, non-binding survey, and solar was brought on there, and there were a good chunk of people. Did not want to see solar on that side either, so that was another, I didn't know, but there was never an official. Public vote or anything like that, other than the survey, that, I'm just saying that for the record.
Yeah.
Right.
So if there are any other questions, uh, we can go through the submission checklist, and actually, a bit of good news for the planning board members. Um. Uh, after a quick conversation with, uh, an attorney from Bernstein Sure. Uh, I know that in the past, we've always voted by article, but we don't actually have to do that anymore. As long as we just reference the findings for each of the items, then you only need to do the one vote at the end. Rather than just saying Article three is complete, Article seven is complete, we don't have to do that part, it's just whether you believe all this is.
Cool. I don't know if that's gonna be more or less confusing.
Yeah, because there's a lot of conditions, we have, we have, right?
I, that's, that's what I'm writing up.
And Rebecca.
Yeah. Yeah. Sheet up your checklist.
Yeah.
That's why I'll still, I'll still write down the findings, so that if they look good to you, you can just reference that for the recordings, and then if there's any changes, you can make changes.
All right, so we're ready to go through this?
Ready to go.
Do it, all right. So section three point five point one. Uh, the application's been accepted by the town office, submitted all the town forms. Applicant information is on the site plan. Property location details is on the site maps. Verification of ownership, we have a deed that's been provided. Planner has confirmed, fees have been paid. Construction cost. It's supposed to say estimated cost of construction.
Uh, estimated, estimated cost and construction schedule, yeah.
The schedule's, uh, in the documents here somewhere, I, I've read it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Description of the projects, that's in section one of the application, start date is anticipated fall twenty four, ending fall twenty five. All other state and federal permits are required. We have a list here on the checklist of the other permits.
And I'll also note that, um, they do need to get a main apartment transportation entrance as well.
Uh, yep.
The condition would be to.
So, we, we have a decommissioning plan. Is that the extent of what is required there? We don't need some kind of an acceptance for DEP.
The DEP is gonna have to review their decommissioning plan anyways, prove it, uh, this is so you can see that draft language.
So we don't, we don't need the official as part of our.
No, and for item ten, the condition of approval that the board would pass is that. All the items that are referenced, that I've referenced there, plus the DOT entrance, must be acquired before, uh, construction.
Okay, makes sense to me.
I have a question on this one.
Yeah.
Does there, in the decommissioning plan, that is after what, twenty five years or fifty years? Just, it seems to me, Max, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the company have to put up good phase money in a scroll account? That covers that, or is that different?
That's the performance guarantee item, and that's actually one of the standards that's, uh, gonna be brought up later.
Okay.
Okay, site maps are in appendix A, that's all of our full size drawings, estimated water sewage are required. If it's like you connect to sewer, uh, not required. Even site, oh, sorry, we just see two hundred form provided, unrequired, there's no septic. Traffic, there is a traffic, uh, statement, let's say, in the document, uh, basically just saying there. Outside of construction, there's really not gonna be much of any traffic coming in there, which makes perfect sense. So, we have one condition for three point five point one.
Yep.
Three point five point two, title block, names of engineers and others provided, that's all in the documents. We have our approval blocks on the drawings, I believe.
The signing one on the.
We have conditions. We don't have a, I guess the revision block is not for us, the revision block is for you. Okay. Um. Building structure drawings, I think all the information pertinent to the site stuff is going to provided. Uh, estimated peak hour traffic and average daily traffic, note here says a vehicle per month post-construction. How much, how much operation and maintenance work actually goes into this? I'm assuming it's next to nothing, like if a device fails, you go replace the device.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of remote monitoring, so you can tell when things are broken, there's usually one or two actual scheduled visits out there a year. Everything else is just reactive.
Um, site map prepared by engineer architect, we've just been talking about all those, stormwater erosion control plans. Um, note here says appendix A and appendix B, appendix A was the drive and appendix B was, I think, the stormwater. Document, right? Stormwater, okay. And it says, we'll also will obtain stormwater permit from DEP. And we know here, you're doing a permit by rule, right?
Yes.
All right, technical and financial capacity, we had a letter from Bangor Savings Bank. Uh, technical capacity, I think you also had a, a letter.
Narrative about historical projects and revision.
All right, control lines on the map, those are all in there, fire protection provisions, we have a letter from the chief somewhere. Saying, uh, fire problems will be able to arrive with a tanker truck, and applicant is going to install a knox box. And that'll go. So for section three point five point two. Unless there's any objections, I think we can approve this all. As it is. Right, article seven, buffer areas.
You know, I wish the signage, signage page was actually the site plan, though, it's only provided, I mean, we can just, you know, it's kind of weird.
The, the map will have to be updated anyways to include the conditions that will be mentioned, so. I, but that's based by the next meeting. Brendan, you're on seven point one, I just have a condition, I have a note on there that evergreens or. A similar vegetation you all want to talk about would be planted on the western side, um.
So that, that made the neighbors happy, because they're, they look like they're about twenty feet apart or something apart, um. Um, but is that what made the neighbors happy? Do you know, it's a number of, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it was a gesture.
The most like, the fur will get like twenty foot in diameter and the.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's to supplement what's fine, right, so, um, it's not the, the sort of single measure up there, so.
Okay.
Um, I have just a question about that, I mean, this lease will probably include the entire field. That where the entrance road is, right, not just to, not just the road itself, but the rest of the field as well, I. Cause, cause that's, that's a bode field, I know, I mean, I, I, it's not, it's not hay, uh, I understand, it's just. Oh, yeah, are you trying to do that, maintaining that?
So we, our, our lease will just pretty much contain the solar project, typically, we have a non-exclusive reason just for the access that would actually end, so the. I, I, my understanding is the landowner will contain a metal or hay that, that field.
Your lease will not include any road footage, basically, it will just include a access road that's, that's a right of way through that. That property.
Yeah, it's all, it's, yeah, it's all part of the.
But the field itself would be not a part of, and then therefore can be bowed or kept in its current, current state and, uh.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, good, that's good.
It's a little, uh, it's a little odd, uh, to have sort of a. Vague buffer without understanding exactly what's going to be, like, it's sort of the less to be determined.
Or, yeah, we can, we can define, maybe we're happy to say, you know, you know. You know, a white spruce or balsam fir, fir equivalent kind of thing, we're, we're gonna plant something that's, that, that's native, um, so we're happy to sort of define the. Variety of this, what you're getting at.
Yeah, and the, and the, the quantity, it's sort of, it's sort of an odd, odd spot to have a buffer.
I don't know, a stone wall, but probably, I think in a sense.
Why do you think it's odd?
Well, just in the sense that it's, you know, it's so far away from.
The people.
Everything, right, like, here, the buffer, the buffer that's being proposed is obviously providing screening to the west. Right, and where's the nearest person in that direction that we view it as from, like, it's hundreds of feet away, right?
Well, yeah, but true, but if you're there, that, the house right across the street from that field. Has total view of that, of that field, and always, it's not that far, it's not that far away, and you wouldn't see right through those trees. In the winter, you'd see all of those, that array, right, right there, so a buffer that stands at ten feet. There, when it goes, it grows to ten feet, twelve feet, it's flipping, like it's that view, so we don't see those, that right, but right now, the way it's set. You would see it, because it's, it's not that dense, it's down there, and it's all saplings and it's. I don't know how much they're cutting out twice, they're coming to the wall, but it's. There's not enough there to shield it, the winter, that's for sure.
Well, rock wall's outside of the fenced area, so they're just not gonna cut there.
Right, but, you know, you, I don't know how the distance, I, I.
Open the sun? Because of the sun?
Well, because, I mean, it's just, it's kind of. It's a clear view across the field, right, right to where the solar, solar panels are gonna start, I don't know, I, I actually do, I, I did look at the things I have. Closing actually here is.
Yeah, so there's the, their field, which is almost, something like fifty, four hundred feet.
Right.
You have a stone wall on the far side of there, we're gonna leave the first, I think it's about fifty, sixty feet of trees, I think the, the, the width of there is there. Before you get to the solar array, and all, all the while, the, I mean, the slope of it all just continues to fall away, and so I think. I mean, I think the aspect of this is, you know, it's very good to see very little of the, I was gonna say, one of the photos that I took in there. Is actually me at the edge of where Alex projected was gonna be, right, where the clearing was gonna start, and I'm facing towards where the road is, and.
This one, this one's here.
No, uh, that's, that's the stone wall. That's across the valley, that's across the valley, that, that last, that last one, and I, I know it's not great because of the.
Right.
Or like, but you, I could only barely see the, uh, the electrical poles there.
Right, but you can see the field, I mean, I know, you know, I don't know, I don't know how much, how much reflection comes off of those panels, I mean, so if. If it, if it reflects a lot of light, you're gonna see it back in there sparkling away, I mean, I, I'm all for this project, but I do think that we have to consider that. What the neighbors are, or, or might think or feel about.
You don't, you don't really get glare off the solar panels, because the angle of them, the sun hits the thing and the light skips up into the sky, so like. It doesn't really cause no glare for someone who's on the ground.
That's why I'm just noting, but, uh, potential condition of approval is evergreens being planted on the western line, because that's, at least from what Alex was telling me, that's what the neighbors request. Some year-round ones, as Eric know it, uh, just is still a nice thick brush, so that you can't see it from. That, that's all that they want, just that, that level of security.
I assume that the panels are gonna go with the slope of the land, because it is, it is, there is quite a, really, not radical, but. Steep slope to that land, so, you know, I mean, they're not gonna be raised up as you go down the slope, right?
Exactly, yeah, the array will fall away.
Yeah, well, that, that's gonna make a big difference.
Yeah, definitely.
And also, we've been planting a hedge, we want to do two, three, like, conifers, there, so it looks more natural.
Um, so how, how do we approve this buffer plan? I'm, I'm reading through seven point one. And for this particular application. It's sort of vague what's required.
Maybe it's a little, we've got like thirty to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty feet to the. This is, this is going to be, it's now, and it's only gonna get more robust as time goes by, the, the land was logged. What, twenty years ago or thirty years ago or something, so all that's gonna get thicker, so I think we're leaving a natural buffer, and then they're adding. Some evergreens for the lower conditions, and it's pretty far. From our.
All right.
What would you do differently?
I, I honestly, I probably wouldn't do anything, just like, um, you know, maybe you have multiple rows, stagger the. Stagger the evergreens to make it a little more opaque, but it, the, the requirement here. Um, is sort of qualitative, you know, says put in trees, make use of. Natural features such as the topography, stand of trees, you know, it's, uh. And this is where, it's sort of a, it's sort of a performance requirement. Um. So, I mean, if the screening goes in, it turns out that it's inadequate, it's a little complacent to the town, I guess it gets revisited then.
And that's why this would be a, a condition of approval that you specifically state the types of trees or any rows that you wanna do. Uh, if you think it's broad as it's presented right now, then what the board would do is say, you want to have this. One or two rows of evergreen trees specifically on this area, and then if the neighbors complain that that's not. If that's not efficient, then unfortunately, they planted the tree, whereas if provision doesn't plant those type, those exact trees in that exact area. Then, yeah, it, there is standing now to have some enforcement on it. That makes sense.
Yes, so. We can't, you're saying that we can't leave it vague and then let it be enforced later on, we need to come up with some, some kind of performance requirement as a condition of the approval. So that can be enforced, uh, later on.
So what's funny is that I literally was talking to someone today about this very item, um, because there is this. The Supreme Court case, Supreme Court case in Portland, I think, where, uh, a developer. Set on their site plans, we're gonna leave these trees right here, and then all this project's gonna happen here, well, then a couple of years go by, and then they remove those trees. And the city said, well, you removed these trees that were on your plan, years and years after litigation later, the court came back and said. Well, they may have had it on the plan, but it's not a condition of approval that they leave those trees up, if. It was a condition that certain trees had to be there, or that trees have to be there, then that's one thing, but just leaving it vaguely means they can still. Do some more stuff, as long as it still fits your ordinance, so, so it can be left vague, they can't just get rid of all the trees, but. If you want better screening, you should specifically state what you want, like evergreens or a similar tree. That's a year-round tree.
I, I, I hate going into the weeds during the meeting, but.
You mean the trees?
Uh, yes, uh, but.
Needles.
Uh, I do, I do have a question about this, um, so if we have, make an arrangement, we come up with a, a condition, that's all well and good. But if somebody asks a question in the meeting of an applicant, and the applicant says, I will do this. And it gets recorded in the meeting minutes, but it doesn't show up in the documents, how binding is that?
Depends if they actually put it in their application.
And if it's not in the application, right?
If it's not in the application, then, yeah, that's a bit hard.
Why, why do we, why do we make it a condition, they have to put in, uh, conifers, staggered conifers, uh, they'll, they'll, they'll greater than twenty feet apart across the whole western border.
Well, not across the whole western border, though.
Yeah, yes, yes, we can absolutely do something like that.
Why don't we do that? I mean, that would just, just starts making an issue, you don't, you don't mind, right?
Yeah, no, I think we're, you know, we, we're, we want a sort of specific metric that we, that we're measured against. Yeah.
It's, it's very much like their words on that.
Well, I don't, I mean, across the, the western border of the field.
Of the, okay. Well, there's only ten trees shown here, we could do it by a number.
Every twenty, every twenty feet.
Well, twenty feet, it's gonna be, kind of look like, well.
You know, because they grow, I mean, I, I planted conifers too close to each other, you know, and it's a huge mistake if you do that, you know, they need twenty feet. Stagger, yeah, twenty feet apart.
But you're saying two rows, staggering, twenty feet.
Staggered, no, no, just, yeah.
All right, so what are, what are we, what are we asking for specifically? We're asking for evergreen trees or shrubs?
Mixed, I say mixed conifer trees, not shrubs. Mixed evergreen trees, conifers. Staggered every twenty feet. Across the field, the border, the western border of the field.
So if you put in a three foot pine tree, and put in another three foot pine tree, twenty feet apart, you're not providing any screening.
No, 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 they should be about a base feet tall.
Yeah.
So the other thing is, do we know if this guy wants to lose some of his field to a big border of evergreens, because starving them is, that's gonna be a big swath. On this side, this is going wrong, so, and number, just gonna ask to design this thing on the spot. Why don't, why don't you guys come back with a design that works?
I believe this location, you know, we, I, I, my colleague has worked this out, and I know he's, I know this was the most preferable location to put these trees, so I think you're right, that like. The landowner doesn't want the trees encroaching into their, into their field, they didn't want them in the middle, you know, to sort of block, break up the field. In order to allow, continue to mow it.
So there's something magical about stopping at that point halfway down the field, as far as, this is only, it only goes halfway down. This is only, it only goes halfway down. I mean, that's all been figured out on site?
I think the logic there is just that the, you know, the, the existing buffer gets wider and wider as you, as you go out there. So really the area that's, that really sort of needs addressing is that first area. So. Um, that was the thought behind that.
And whether they're staggered or not, I, if I was the owner, I'd wanna know, because it's just gonna take up more room.
The owner is listening on Zoom right now.
It is a huge, it is a huge field, but, you know, quite huge, but it's a significant field. So I mean. If, if those conifers take up twenty or thirty feet coming from the stone wall. I don't think it's gonna have any difference, make any difference there, but I suppose it's, you know, to some degree up to the, if the owner objects to that idea. Does love them there, then I guess that's. Their, that's their decision, I suppose.
Have the owners seen this? Are they okay with it, the solution, or?
Jim, Nancy, if you don't mind weighing in, if you've been aware of plants.
Yeah, I'm, uh, we're very confident that working with revision will come up with a reasonable way to buffer the. Project and we'll do that together.
Thank you.
So, uh, why don't we make the conditional approval here that a, uh.
I have it all written how.
Plan is provided.
I, I have it written as plant mixed conifer, conifer eight foot tall trees. At no more than twenty foot apart on western boundary along the fields.
If it's okay with them, yeah.
That works for me. Okay, nobody's got any instructions. Alright, uh, construction standards.
Remember what the requirement on that was. Um, it's various state items, MUDAC, NFPA, um, international building code.
Oh, it's just, it's incorporating code by reference, okay. Electrical standards, electrical disturbances. Okay. Can't imagine we'll be having that. Sort of village district, obviously not an issue, not developable acreage, four point two eight acres out of twenty eight point seven two. Will be developed, which is twelve point nine percent.
But they're only leasing the six acres, so we're doing the percentage of. The homeowners acreage.
Well, that, that percentage was based on the impervious areas, but the panels are actually gonna be in everything. And the lease air field, I, I don't know if I included the whole. No, I didn't. I could, I could amend that if you would like. Okay, did include that as well.
What's, what was the twenty eight acres? When I heard forty, I heard different numbers. It doesn't really matter really.
Really, I don't know. Oh, twenty eight point seven two is what they noted in their application as the total. Developable remaining acreage. So that was actually my mistake in the findings effect. Total acreage is thirty five point seven acres, thirty three acres are developable. And four point two eight will be consisting of this project. So there's about eighty seven point one percent of developable area remaining after this. So I'm gonna make that direction.
Uh, seven point six is noise. Uh, you had a good description in the, uh, in the documents about what the noise, uh, output is going to be. And it seems to be that when the system is running, it does, I think it's thirty three decibels at the nearest property lot. Seven point seven is lighting, there's no light posed. Seven point eight refuse disposal, uh, there's no refuse disposal on the site. Sanitary provisions, portable toilets used for construction, no bathrooms, no instructions to bleed. Seven point ten signs, only temporary and emergency signs will be used. Seven point eleven storage of materials, no storage when construction is completed. It says. Seven point twelve emergency services, uh, the notes says refer to the fire chief recommendations, we just talked about that. Uh, earlier and seven point thirteen archaeological and historic sites. I believe we have, uh, letters.
Letters from the state historic office and.
And there are no impacts. On any of that. So for article seven, we're gonna have a addition on seven point one. And all. Uh, article eight stormwater managements, we have a stormwater management plan in the packet. The, uh, ultimate outcome is that the. The stormwater flows are gonna be reduced, all these storm events as a result of retention bond. All that seems in order. Eight point two is erosion control, uh, we just talked about the erosion control plan, uh, a little bit. There's a whole document in there. I don't have any other comments on the erosion control. Uh, hydrological assessment of groundwater impacts, the note here says under two thousand gallons of water will be used. What's the, what, why did you have to know?
Because if it's over two thousand gallons, then we actually go through the standard, but if it's under two thousand, it's essentially exempt.
Got it, okay. Water quality impacts, eight point four, note says no above ground fuel tank tanks or untreated waters will be discharged. Three point five phosphorus control, we have a phosphorus calculation in here. Um, note says also requires made DEP review.
I believe that was included in there as well. Just because it's gonna go through the stormwater permit by rule.
The phosphorus is part of that as well, but the phosphorus is a separate thing.
Oh, yeah, I, I mixed it up with. I don't think they traditionally review the phosphorus calculations. Sorry, that's probably my error.
Where is that?
Uh, the phosphorus worksheet is appendix D.
Um, I didn't have any notes on the phosphorus control.
They said it in the standard stormwater permit by rule filed with many people ensure compliance with best practices for stormwater erosion controls mitigate. That was listed under phosphorus control item as well.
Uh, eight point six soils, and it's be demonstrate soil dead down of site and our requirement here on soils. Uh, it's just to identify any severe or very severe soils and I don't think the wording. Air and water pollution, no emission that is caused by the use, so there's a note here. Eight point eight set of cultural natural values. Outreach to state agencies found no conflicts is the note. Um, referring to our historic and archaeological. Uh, items on the site. Eight point nine flood zone, not located in flood zone. Eight point ten, river stream broken wetlands, appendix A depicts the potential water bodies. Um, that was actually something that I had a question about, because mentioned in the notes, it's a stream. A virtual pool and, uh. Also the face of wetland. And is there a, in the application, is there an actual drawing of the whole site that shows this?
Like the whole property?
Or, or at least show the locations of those.
I don't know. I mean, the, the virtual pool, the stream are outside of the field of view of the project, you know, beyond the. The extent of the view of the plan, so I don't, I don't believe that they're depicted in there. Obviously, the forest water is closer. That's in there.
Uh, eight point eleven buffer requirements for water quality protection. The note here says seventy five foot buffer proposed between project site and closest stream. What's, uh. I don't recall seeing that in the documents. Max, do you remember what that note?
Uh, and their standards. And after what they state, a natural vegetative buffer will remain in place between the project area and stream to the north. The buffer will be greater than seventy five feet, slopes are between zero and ten percent between the project and the stream. Erosion control methods will be utilized during construction to further. Further project the stream and adjacent wetland.
So the stream doesn't fit onto the overall site floor? It's beyond the north of that?
Yes, it's, I mean, it sounds like it is more than seventy five feet away from the limit of, of our work. So, yeah, it must be out of the field of view to the north.
It's, it's not marked here, this is at least a hundred and fifty, twenty feet.
And it does, yeah, it's a greater than seventy five feet, so I actually don't really exactly know, but I have.
Get a question on eight point seven. They are wide position. When you actually put these, these little will take cells in. Do they ever break or how do you actually get them in there? And is it anything in there? Any silicone that leaks out or escapes, anything of that nature?
They're, they're bolted on to the steel racking, um, fixed in place. Um, they're not, nothing in there is, you know, liquid or soluble, right? So they're, I mean, it's solid, you know, essentially a solid, a solid plastic. Glass sandwich, uh, with an aluminum frame going around the outside.
And the metal framing is already in the ground when you put it in?
Yeah, you build, you build the, you put the screws in the ground, you build the racking on top of those. Those are the, is the foundation. Once the racking is all up and square and plumb, you start putting panels on.
And then none of them ever break?
They, they occasionally do, you know, we sell them there, you know, baseball fields and so forth and so on, so. Every now and then they're swapped out.
Alright, um, any other items on? Article eight, looks like we're. Moving to approve that. As submitted. Alright, article nine, traffic impacts. Uh, note here says proposal does not require analysis, uh, the project won't create any impacts on traffic. Uh, street access driveways, street and road construction standards. Note here says driveway requires permission from public works director to comply with municipal standards.
That actually says a driveway requires permission from the main department of transportation.
Okay.
So.
Uh, and nine point three, parking and loading, turnarounds proposed with no designated parking spaces. Seems fine to me. In article ten, decommissioning plan. Do we need to do anything there? We can approve this and let the state handle the decommissioning plan.
Yeah, those standards are more of just making sure you're aware of how they're gonna notify neighbors and the butters and the town. Because this was something that was happening with controversy lane when that sort of farmers built. How some people wanted to contact the project managers at the time, and so these standards were put in place to. Make sure such things are allowed to happen in future applications.
What does that have to do with decommissioning?
Um, the construction item on the very bottom. I thought we were talking about all the standards there.
Oh, no, no, I was specifically talking about decommissioning, because we're not gonna have the final plan until.
Right.
You submit it to DEP and expect approval.
Yeah, same thing with the, well, the decommissioning one was, again, people were concerned, there was nothing gonna be in place, and so we. Have this so you can see what the decommission plan tracks.
Okay, we don't need to put on a condition here. Because, because we don't have all the things that are required here, like we don't, we don't have the performance guarantee.
No, and all that would fall under a condition that we said earlier, that all the state permits that I have under. Article three have to be attained.
Yeah, you had a decommissioning on there, alright, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that it came back.
I do actually have one item back under article nine, sorry to. Wrenching here, but, uh, one comment that I did get from some of the neighbors and, uh, the school. Was because they have bus, buses coming in and out between six forty five and seven forty five for drop off. And then between one forty five and two forty five for picking the students up. They would like to have a temporary hole for construction vehicles going to the site to go to and from the site. Uh, Barbara and Johnny probably remember this was again, something very similar we did with, um. The controversy lane.
Okay, what's, what's the condition?
Uh, it would just be, uh, halting construction vehicles to enter and leave the site. Between six forty five and seven forty five in the morning, as well as one forty five and two forty five in the afternoon. Oh, as well as Saturdays during football season. That, that was, that was, that was, there were, that was, I had a call with Brian Race. Literally this afternoon, and he said Saturdays are a concern as well, because there could be some football games going on and. We've, we, they don't think you're gonna be doing construction on Saturdays, but you want to just make that known. You don't have to include the Saturday if you don't want to.
Can, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Is there, is there, I just wanna make sure that's limited just to during school this week or not this summer?
Just the school.
And is there a type of vehicle that's of concern? You know, obviously there's larger, you know, equipment deliveries that go in and out that might be more.
It would be the larger vehicles, but they're just worried that, uh, multiple construction vehicles are gonna be going there. As they're trying to get all, while all these parents are also going to the school at the same time, so it's more of just. Wanting to try and minimize as much traffic on there as they can.
But pickup trucks.
If, if it's, if it's a small casual personal vehicle or pickup truck, then yes, but. They're saying like the larger construction vehicles, if you're using them.
You won't wanna try then anyway, it takes you like a half an hour to get back on.
Yeah, I think my, my only suggestion would be maybe to limit that to just, you know, things with a flatbed or something like that. Yeah, something like that, that's, you know, not gonna limit a project manager to pick up truck.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's certainly an interesting request, where you have a, a school right there that has. There's six hundred students at the school, so you got five hundred cars on the road. We're trying to stop one dump truck from passing on the same road and all this traffic, I don't know, it seems. Seems sort of silly to me.
That was just the request that was being made.
Uh, yeah. Well. Certainly doesn't hurt anything, I suppose. Is this, does this actually belong to article nine?
Uh, it would be street access driveways and street road constructions. It would probably fall under either traffic impact analysis or street access. Or it could also fall under, uh, vehicle and pedestrian traffic. Or some of the. There, there's a few traffic items.
Isn't there one that's specifically about construction?
Construction, road construction standards?
I mean, there's just general construction standards and there is, um.
That says road construction standards.
That says road construction standards.
And there's their estimated due traffic.
Yeah. Whatever. It's article nine. Or number eight, doesn't it like construction?
Um, and then fall under maybe ten point thirty five point four if we're painting in a specific place. That's talking about the construction timelines and everything as well, and having them notify the neighbors.
Yeah, why don't we do that then? Let's do it in ten point thirty five point four.
Okay.
All right, so no conditions on article nine then?
The one condition for article ten.
And the condition is?
Uh, it will be to limit the time for flatbed vehicles between six forty five to seven forty five in the morning. And one forty five to two forty five in the afternoon during the school season.
Why don't we just say heavy trucks? Isn't that really?
Heavy trucks.
Yeah. It's really. You got a bunch of dump trucks coming out of there, like aggregates.
Okay.
Concrete and whatnot. All right, so the performance guarantee, that'll be provided with the decommissioning plan. Abandonance. I don't think there's anything we need to discuss there. The note here says applicant understands potential abandonment would leave the town. Uh, it's using the performance guarantee to clean up the project site. Three point three, five point four, construction. Uh, it's requiring identification, so the town and the butters that include details on what construction is estimated to start. One notice supposed to be sent to the list of parties in the round fourteen days prior to the start of construction. Does this notification uh? When you send the notification, you don't send us the whole application, right?
No, it's just a one pager saying we're gonna start construction on this day.
So the schedule that's in the application is not adequate. It needs to be another notification.
And that doesn't have to do with the tree removal?
Uh, we, we have it for construction, but you can make it a, you can make it a condition to include the tree removal if you like.
What's, what's typical for a country to get notified?
We don't get notified on any construction starting projects. The reason this standard was in here was because. People at the last solar farm wants to know when construction's actually started.
That's it. That's the whole checklist. So. I would move to accept the application. With uh, the condition for three point five, twenty one. I've already forgotten what it was.
To improve.
Oh, provides all the additional permits.
Yep.
All state.
Yep, all the required state and local numbers.
And then seven point one for the buffering, the condition is uh. Evergreen. Eight foot evergreen is twenty feet apart in a row along that uh, stone wall.
Staggered.
Staggered.
So let's go.
And then the last condition, last condition is for ten point thirty five point. Or uh, limiting the truck hours that we just discussed.
Between six forty five to seven forty five in the morning and one forty five to two forty five in the afternoon during school season. Uh, there was also one more condition to have a lockbox installed based on the recommendations of the fire chief.
Um. That is in the application, actually.
They said they would do it and Chief Smelter just wants to be sure that is a condition.
Okay.
It's like the tree thing that I was mentioning earlier.
Sure, except the difference is that this is explicitly stated in the uh, in the application, I believe, that it's gotta be provided. I understand. So, yeah. Uh, is there a second?
A second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? Or this four zero?
Will you guys do a local article in the local paper about this becoming available to? Local people?
Um, we would definitely consider it. We do, we do all of our marketing primarily online. Um. Yeah, we, we definitely, and once we typically don't market these sites until they're pretty much under construction, you know, they're gonna happen. Um, or at least market them specifically, but. Yeah, we love, we love local, local members for sure.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
All right, and when you consider also to transpoint, when you start sourcing for this project, that you source for American made products?
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of factories that have planned, that are constructed, is incredible. So I think in the, in the, in the coming years, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'll walk Nate out and then.
And wait a minute, these guys are gonna build a big building. It's a perfect place for solar, solar and water.
Uh, I'll coordinate out.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let these two start the pre-application. Thank you again.
Hang on a minute, you'll appreciate this comment. I was the one that sponsored the solar farm panel bill and legislates yourself. The hour and three quarters you've just been. You can thank me for.
Very education.
Plus all the modern buildings on the building we have codes you haven't dealt with.
We're a real state now. Building. All right. Uh, so, uh, Dana Dow. Atlantic Highway New Warehouse. Uh, would you just introduce your project? That's what you're gonna do?
I don't know if you, you have the drawing. Yeah, this is my son, Will. He's a store manager, soon to be owner. I'll put myself up with pasture. Let him enjoy his life. And the warehouse is going to be on the. Side where the discount center is. The top of the map, you can't see it, but that's route one. It's just out of sight. At the very top, you know, the driveway goes out that way. The black building is the one that exists there now. It's a hundred by. A hundred and sixty with a little nub on the edge. The red is the warehouse. It's sixty by a hundred and twenty. It comes out right to the edge of the pavement. Going in the. This parking area. And that's basically all it is. Run out of warehouse space.
Is that the same side where your showroom is with the Hall of Fame?
Yes.
So, so it's like right coming up to route one? So I'm gonna backwards.
It's, that's in the back behind the building.
Okay, so you're going behind.
Yeah, behind the building, you know, off the side.
And to the right is that's where the ball field where the Alzheimer's play.
Yeah, that big field. Yeah, that's not being touched.
That's not be, I would hate to see that.
Yeah. Well, if it ever gets touched, you and I won't be. You might do it someday. Who knows? Maybe the side is as big enough as it is, go somewhere else.
I don't know for the record if I should disqualify myself because I've bought several pieces of fine furniture produce. So I, I, but I could be objective.
Yeah.
But I have, as far as full disclosure, I'm very happy with it.
I should disqualify myself because I served on this planning board for several years. Before I got into the Senate, so.
I voted for you.
And you see the smile? Well, that's what I, that's what I show when people say, well, do you miss it? Ten years on the map, somebody else will step up and blame you. So my goal was just to come and introduce this so that the next. Board meeting in April eleventh, we can come with all the plans. So I gotta work with whoever it is. I gotta work to make sure all the T's across the I's are dotted and we can just. Get through it and then they can start construction made for us to start.
Is the um, uh, this land on the opposite, your main showroom, is that a, a separate? Uh, lot or is it, do you straddle route one? I mean, as far as is it a?
I, I purchased it.
Yeah.
Seven years ago.
It must be big. I mean, how big is?
It's eighteen acres.
Okay, so you're like.
The whole field plus some into the woods and, yeah.
So as far as developed area, you're fine, because you're not really expanding your parking lot either.
No, I don't need to, because it's, you know, if it was Walmart, you'd need a huge parking lot. Purchased to five or six customers at a time, I consider.
Busy.
Busy.
So you'll just store like the extra beds and couches and stuff there?
Yes.
And the table.
Yeah, see, I've got some storage in that building that's in black.
I see.
And I've got too much in there. I wanna get it out, because I've just outgrown the warehouse on the other side of the street, which is. Uh, hundred and ten by fifty, a little bit smaller than that, but it's racked up.
Right.
Uh, I've just outgrown it and my carpenter that built it reminded me, I said. I said to him one time, wow, that's big and I will never fill that thing, so.
What are you gonna do with that big chair?
Somebody wanted to buy it, but it found out it costs twenty five hundred dollars. That's what I paid for it. Yeah.
Wow.
And I, I, I didn't buy it. My other store manager, he bought it and I saw it. Under a trailer truck, it's snow all over and I asked my wife, I said, what is that? And she said that the store manager was her brother.
Okay.
And she said, oh, Jason bought that and some great big giant, I don't know why. I looked at it and I went to two of my workers, I says, we're putting that together today.
Yeah.
And putting it out there. You can't imagine how many people. Come and take pitch, kids get out of the cars and they run to that thing. They wanna get in it, have their pitches taken. I've seen. People at Moody's I know are traveling north, because I heard them, the discussion, come back and get pitches in it before they. So, yeah, I don't know how long it'll be there. He'll decide.
That's great.
It'll sell ownership.
So it doesn't seem to be any issues, probably just the, the site plan that sort of shows how far you are from. The wetlands and stuff.
Yeah, the wetlands are way down.
Yeah, I think I provided a. An image from a snapshot from getting the habitat map online. There, there are some on the upside.
Yeah, I could have get that myself.
It's, it's on like very southern part of the property, but it should be. Hundred plus feet away at least.
Oh, yeah. That field is uh, deceivingly big, because I've watched so many people. Try to shoot a deer at the end of the field. From room one over the years and they never hit it. Two hundred and fifty yards across there. It was my brother who was an excellent shot. But that was a long time ago. Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's a. Probably two hundred feet before you even get to the closest piece of, I'll have to get it from here.
Yeah, I'll send you the length of the whole.
Is that a company that comes and builds metal warehouses?
Yeah, there's several of them in the state.
Yeah.
Yeah. We contracted Xander Leo, Newcastle.
Okay, yeah. And he'll do the interior too?
I actually came out, dug some test pits. And then filled them all back. You wanna see how far down the good soil was? And then they filled them back and. And I said, did it come out good? He says it came out great. So it's good. Hard. Uh, soil.
Yeah. So, well, it looks pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Try to make, I won't take an hour and three quarters.
You might be surprised.
I always have to do, I was a Republican and normally Democrat would be asked. But they asked me, because I was the minority leader in the Senate, plus I was the highest rated. Uh, observation. Republican. They had a very high rating, so they, you know, if they could win me over, it would go through, so. And, and I already knew that people of state of Maine wanted it anyway, whether my colleagues did or not. It was gonna go through, because that's what people wanted.
What's going on now as far as um, solar and like farmlands, protecting farmlands? Is there? Is that an issue or the people?
It is, has been an issue and there's something in the. Bill that helps protect farmlands. My uh. My second in command, he's a farmer. Apple farmer off in Turner. And said, I don't like these winter, I don't want a solar, I don't like any of that stuff. And then he says, one time, he said, I might lease out my land for salt. I actually had a dozen companies from all over New England come right to the. Senate to sit down with me after it gets done, just to thank me, because it changed the parameters so that. You couldn't build them before. It would have been minuscule and nobody'd waste that time with them. That's why you see in the paper when they announce them, you know, say they're like four point nine five. Mega watts, I think so, because the limit's five. Those are the smaller ones that we build and then. There's another bill was put in from massive ones that are fifty or more. None of those have been built. Yeah, but uh.
I think there's, there's the one in Warren that should be hundreds of acres, I think.
That, that one, that may be the first one in the state that's being talked about then. That was a separate bill.
Probably the old Oyster River Range would be my guess.
No, actually, surprisingly not. That's um, that's a whole different thing. The town now just got that. Um.
The town owns that land now?
Town owns the shooting range, yeah. Um, because of all the back taxes on it, pretty much.
They didn't want it. They didn't wanna clean it up, because they, they left like. A million tires out there to make the burns of the firing range.
Well, but the town's taking steps to clean that up. No, the uh, location is on. Oh. What? Whoa.
Quon's Mill Road?
Quonville Road, yeah.
What?
A hundred acres, did I?
No, it's, I think it was maybe six hundred? It's four hundred to six hundred, it's somewhere in that area. They, they bought. The company bought a few pieces of land, combined them as one and. Doing that.
Six hundred and forty acres is a square mile. Never got a bird.
Six hundred acres of.
Right, so everybody wants to go home.
Yeah, I'm saying, are there any other questions for the pre-application for keeping in mind or anything?
I'm not gonna go through all this land use only that stuff.
No, I was hoping that one could be uh, more of just letting you know, I could like to do a public, required public hearing if there's some items in the ordinance. The ordinance suggestions I had, we don't wanna talk about, we can remove them, um.
There, there's definitely some stuff in there that I, I'm not in favor of, but. We can certainly just discuss it all at the.
At the public hearing, okay.
I have one quick question.
Ten foot by six foot elevator car?
That was something.
Is insane.
That was some things that uh, uh, Chief Booker actually requested for EMS.
That, that six foot by ten foot elevator car is enormous.
Yeah.
And like. The cost of putting in a, like, because you can't make it a fifteen hundred pound elevator with a car that size. So it basically would make it cost prohibitive to put in an elevator in pretty much any building that will ever get built in this town.
Uh. We could uh, remove that exact square footage and say elevator. Based on recommendation by the emergency medical services chief, because Chief Booker's main concern was just actually navigating.
It's, it's a constant problem. And, and the problem with it is that ADA and uh. I wrote it down. I can't think of what the other agency. It's the state. It's the state elevator rules. Both of those required, minimum required areas inside of cars are now too small. To maneuver a full-size EMS uh, stretcher into. And the stretchers keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger, because we all keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And uh, the old, the old rules don't work. And so it is a constant fight and like. And, uh, the old, the old rules don't work. And so it is a constant fight and like. Uh, it makes sense to have a minimum standard, six feet by ten feet is, is nutty, like, it's just way too big.
I can, we can remove this specific number and just leave it to recommendation to the EMS chief then, if that might be better.
I think, I think we should actually put a dimension on there and not just leave it up to the women that get us.
Okay.
Do we have a date for this?
That's what I would like to try and settle before we leave, so, uh, I know.
You can, you guys.
I, I do think that we should meet at the planning board to discuss these first before they go, before we go public, because there's things that we might want to include, or things we don't. We, that the planning board might just agree with, rather than making it, that could be addressed before. We allocate a night to spend and spend an hour or so.
Yeah, so I'll quickly mention the public hearing. It needs to be posted for at least thirteen days. And then two notices go in the paper, one at least seven days beforehand, and one can be the day of. So if you do want to meet. Uh, any, so for thirteen days, we're pretty much looking at, um, March twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth. As the earliest to hold such a public meeting. And that's me putting on like Facebook or the town website tonight, that we're doing this date. And on the twenty-eighth, that's when the budget committee will still be meeting. They, they or may not be using the conference room, but I was told. That if they are gonna meet there, we'll probably be here again. Um. The town will vote to put warrant articles on the agenda, April. The second Tuesday of the month. I'm assuming that's April fourteenth, but I'm probably.
April ninth.
April ninth? April ninth. Is when the select board will be determining warrant article items, so.
So we're gonna, we're gonna have a public hearing, we're going to make a recommendation to the select board. And they're going to vote on whether or not to put a recommendation onto the warrant.
Right, and for the ordinance, I specifically want to just get anything LD two thousand and three related. Every other suggestion that you will see in there were suggestions that I was either asked by residents or, like I mentioned, like. Direct, Derek Booker gave me his recommendation for an elevator item, because we're having this thing, a whole thing on affordable housing in there, so we wanted to be prepared for that. Um, there was something on shipping containers, because we don't have a shipping building, shipping container permit, but we do have building permits, so that's trying to clean that up. And then some other uses that just correcting the matrix pretty much.
Do you have a, I had a coworker ask me a couple of weeks ago, for instance, in Waldenboro, if you had a two-family. Apartment building, could you just make that into condominiums? Is there anything in the, that supports or it doesn't?
Yes.
Or is it, is that like LD two oh three?
They just be, they just be. Housing units.
Yeah, what it's, but there's nothing to say that they, a person can or can't, or is there any ordinance against it, or you just can call it a condo?
They'd be a single-family dwelling, you know, so that's what they're approved, that would.
That would be so, because I didn't know the answer.
You mean converting a single?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's two, it's two apartments and they, you wanted to change it to say, oh, they're condos.
Right.
And I don't know, I've never seen anything.
So switch.
Just the.
It's, it's a whole monthly rental, you're selling individual units as a condominium.
The contractual arrangement?
I don't know if it's, if the town.
No, it's an ownership, because when you're condominium, it's not like, I mean, you own the actual unit that you're in.
So it doesn't have anything to do with us, is what it's.
It doesn't have to do anything.
I mean, you're built, you're, it's, it's a single-family dwelling units or duplex at this point.
Up until this point, and then it's gonna be converted into two single-family units that are.
In a structure.
And if single structures that are condominiums, you only.
Right, I'm just wondering, uh, I'll.
I, I think this is a question for the registry of deeds, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, 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 I, I just said I'd ask, so. I did my due diligence. But it's, it's weird though, I mean, the weird thing, I mean, a question I know.
So we, we, we just have to meet before the selected meeting on the night?
It would probably be wise to hold a public hearing for what should be on the warrant, because we protect. Because the required public hearing could be after the warrant goes out, but then if you're not happy with that, with what's on the warrant, then that's, uh, the bad state we're in.
So the twenty-first, next week, next Thursday? I mean, because you said the twenty-eighth, we all have the same situation as a.
I have, I have, if I was to post the date tonight, it would have to be at least thirteen days from now. So.
Public hearing.
For the public here, required public hearing, and we can have a second public hearing afterward, after the, the warrant article, which is what the select board always does when. There's all the warrant article things, so.
But these have to be the, whatever changes you make are gonna go. Are gonna be posted in the newspaper along with the, the public hearing date.
Well, well, there's two things we could do. We've been, we do the public he. I thought we were going to be able to talk along with the ordinance items tonight, but I'm looking at the clock, it's almost eight. If we can meet before the select board meeting, then you could still pass on the recommendations. Just wouldn't have had a public hearing. So there's no chance to, as in you make your recommendation and we can have the required public hearing where people still voice on the. Article changes, but.
Okay, but if we met next Thursday on the twenty-first, then thirteen days from there is still before the select board.
Um, if you were to meet next week and then post two weeks after, yes, that can work. I would not be able to attend the twenty-first, because, and that's also gonna be a budget committee meeting as well. Tuesdays and Thursdays. Our budget committee.
All the time?
So.
For the month.
Next Thursday, and not like to say Wednesday, so it doesn't compete with either.
Any day works.
Any day.
Whatever day works for you.
I'm, I'm, I'm confused.
Yeah.
What?
We need to sneak in a me, a meeting to change what we want to change and then we put it out to.
For.
The thirteen, for the public review.
Thirteen day public hearing.
So we would meet next Thursday and the following Thursday?
No, next Wednesday, well.
No, well, you would decide what day you want to meet first, just go over the ordinance, and it would just be the ordinance items, I'm not bringing anyone else or any site plans or anything. Would just be going over the ordinance items, and once that's determined, then we will set a public hearing. Thirteen days afterwards and that'll be it.
Why, why does it have to be thirteen days after that meeting? Why can't it be thirteen days from today?
It can, if you would like. And then during the public hearing, we can just note, the planning board met this day, here are some changes, you shall be aware.
So if you do it today, then you'd have to, you have to publish this as it is. Yeah, so I'll publish the publishing as it is.
Yep.
I'd rather wait until after we've met and then publish it.
Posted on the website and then that's when.
We don't have to, we don't have to provide the document. But if, but if you just have to provide the notification for the meeting.
Yes, but then if someone calls me and says, I'd like to see what the ordinance changes are, this is what I have to give them.
Right.
Sure.
Right, so would we rather wait until we actually talk over them ourselves before we?
Well, we're not giving ourselves enough time to get this, get this done then, right?
Well, we are, if we, if we meet, say, when you said we are.
So if you're all meeting next week, what day would you want to meet next week? That's, that's where we should probably start.
The day that's not a conflict for you, for one thing. And you're saying Thursday is a conflict.
Exactly, we're supposed to be here on Tuesday and Thursday.
When, on Wednesday.
Do we need a core max for this? Because I, I've got a brutal work schedule next week.
It would be. It would be ideal to still have at least three planning boards there. I just have to talk to John on whatever day. You settle on.
Yeah.
Wednesday works for me. I can make it work.
I believe Wednesday works for me too.
At six, or do we want to do it earlier?
Anytime. It's best for you, Max.
Can we do it at four? Maybe?
Four works.
You okay on that?
I would definitely could not make that. I have to work from six thirty A to seven P. I can't get out Wednesday.
Till seven PM?
Seven PM.
Wow.
If you have any things you want to submit, you can just submit them.
Yeah, I can do that, that's what I would do, yeah.
It's, yeah. And again, I'll check with John to see if he can make four o'clock, but Brendan, Barbara, Eric.
Okay, four o'clock on Wednesday, the twentieth?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That said, everyone's putting in their iPhone, I don't know what everyone's doing. I don't, so this reminds you that there's something? See, I have no clue what that's about. Everybody knows.
You don't look at your calendar?
I have no clue.
I live in, if I don't do it.
Yeah, I know, I, I, listen, I'm.
Yeah, I have my work calendar on.
Now, my granddaughter would. May know.
Share her, your calendar with her and she'll send you notices.
I had, it took me three months to try to get a scrimmage game on.
So.
She got it in in twelve seconds.
So I.
So when are we gonna have this public hearing?
Um, we can determine that, we can determine that tonight if you would like, or we can determine that on March twentieth. Do that. Would be one to at least April third afterwards.
I think we should pencil it in because.
But it has to be fourteen days after we'd meet on the twentieth anyway.
Uh, thirteen days.
It doesn't have to be.
Well, it doesn't, but then, but then i- if, if it's not, then any changes we make on that day are not gonna get into it. Before he distributes it possibly.
The soonest that it can be is the twenty-eighth. Also, if we make changes on the twentieth.
Yeah.
There would be some number of days beforehand, and there's no requirements for the number of days.
So I think we're talking about two different timelines. You, you're looking at it as doing a, scheduling something. As of tonight and posting, and if someone asks me for the strap, I give it to them. What Eric is asking is that we don't post it right now, because he doesn't want people to think that. This draft is what you're already recommending, before you guys have met. That's, is I correct on that or?
Yes, absolutely.
But the draft is not publicly available.
It would, it will be if you post it.
If they ask them for it.
Yes.
If you post it tomorrow.
If I posted.
You don't post the doc?
No, but he, people could, could say, oh, we're saying that, we see that there's gonna be a, a, a public, uh, hearing in this. We'd like to see what was being proposed, and then he'd have to give them this.
Yes.
Okay, I don't see that as a problem, but whatever.
But it is, it is if we decide to change it. And then people are gonna go, oh, well, you've changed it. This is why, this is why I thought we were gonna, we were talking about it, and, but in fact, we're not.
Or if we can't incorporate their ideas in time.
So what, what do you, what do you want?
So I think the recommendation for what Eric was asking for was, because you're gonna meet on the twentieth. The recommendation is not, and you can step in when I'm wrong, um, rather than picking a day right now, wait until the twentieth. And then, once you've gone through the ordinance changes, then you pick the day you want to have the official public hearing.
Why don't we have April fourth?
So when, when are you gonna have the document ready after?
That after your meeting on the twentieth, I'm, I'm probably gonna be doing the changes immediately, and then it'll be done by the twenty-first.
So let's, let's schedule it April fourth, the public meeting, and then the select board's the following Tuesday. Why do we have to wait till the twentieth to decide?
I can have, I can make sure the fourth will have the conference room booked and everything, so that there's no other conflicts for that.
Yeah. And third, fourth, I mean, we're not gonna book it on a Friday, right?
Yeah.
Um. So we only have thirteen days, we only have a couple of possibilities.
At least thirteen days, you can do it afterwards, but yeah.
So we're not trying to hit the ninth of the select board meeting? That's not key?
No, we don't, yes.
It would be, it would be good to have the public hearing.
Wednesday, Thursday, or that Monday before the select board meetings, so.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah, those are early choices, right? You have one of those three days. Yeah, okay.
Um, and so you just have to find out if the conference room's ready, is available.
Yep. Sounds good. Yeah, so the twentieth will be the next day to go to the ordinance items. I'll make sure the fourth is booked.
And don't book anybody for the normal public meeting. So you say, we could take it off.
Yeah. Um, the only other thing I'll add is that I just did a workshop for planning board training of. An individual for a certain church. So if there's anyone who's interested in. MMA training, let me know.